Gentlemen, welcome to the Midwest City Council Meeting. Sorry, we're running a little bit late. We've got a full agenda ahead of us tonight. Before we get started, could I call Mr. Sullivan down to lead us in invocation? And Councilman Moore will lead us in the pledge. Please stand.
Would you bow at me, please? Gracious Lord, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for the occasion of this council meeting. Father, I'd ask a blessing be upon these men and women tonight. The difficult decisions they have in front of them. And Father, I ask a special measure of peace and wisdom and discernment be upon them tonight. Father, we thank you so much for this great city that we live and work in. We thank you for these men and women who dedicate their service to this community. And Father, we also thank you for this great nation, the freedoms we enjoy, and those who are defending them at this very hour. Father, I'd ask protection be upon those men and women wherever they are in the world, and their families' peace and comfort while they're away. Father, but ultimately, we thank you for the freedom from sin that we have through the blood that was shed by your Son Jesus on the cross for us. Thank you. We ask all these favors in your Son's holy name. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Before we get started, are there any community-related announcements on the horse or from the audience? I do want to remind the audience that this year is our 75th anniversary, along with Tinker Air Force Base's 75th anniversary, along with the United States Air Force's 70th anniversary. There's a lot going on in Midwest City. I ask to call your attention to our website to get updated on all the events and things that are going on. It's an exciting time to be in Midwest City, and we've got a lot going on. We do have a couple of proclamations to do this evening, so we'll go ahead and get started with those. They actually trust me with this stuff. Kelly, AC Bebaut, Chief Norton, can you come down? As most of you know, that I was a police officer for 31 years. And once you become a first responder, it's absolutely impossible not to respond when you see something. And regardless whether you're on, off, or off-duty, it's just kind of in our nature, isn't it? A little bit. Well, this gentleman was off-duty, and he responded and saved a life. And this is firefighter Kelly McClosson, and we have proclamation for him tonight. Whereas on March 21st, 2017, Midwest City firefighter Kelly McClosson was at the Blazers Ice Center on his personal leisure time. While there, a young man collapsed in apparent distress. Whereas, without hesitation, Kelly, a firefighter from more named Sean Coffey, both immediately started performing CPR and had to use a automatic defibrillator at the arena to save the man's life until Oklahoma City Fire Department arrived on the scene. Whereas, both Kelly and Sean went above and beyond by visiting the man in the hospital and follow-up, following up with him and his family to make sure he was okay. Whereas, the general manager of the Blazers Ice Cream Center, Larry Donovan, knows both men and said, "With their calmness, training, and quick thinking, this young man has a chance of survival." And Mr. Donovan honored them, honored to call them friends, was honored to call them friends, and wanted to personally thank Kelly and Sean for the outstanding job they did during the critical situation. And whereas, we at the City of Midwest City are proud and honored to call Kelly McClosson one of our own and wishes to extend our gratitude for his off-duty heroism. And so therefore, I, Matthew Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim April 25th as Kelly McClosson Day. Thank you, Kelly. There's one other proclamation that, one right, this is kind of a little late in the Terry Craft, our CBDG grant over supervisor, isn't here to receive this, but this has to do with fair housing. Whereas, Title V of the Civil Rights Act of 1968, federal housing law prohibits discrimination in housing, declares a national policy to provide fair housing in the United States of America. Whereas, fair housing means one may freely choose a place to live without regard to race, color, religion, sex, handicap, family status, or national origin. Whereas, April has traditionally been designated as Fair Housing Month. And whereas, the City of Midwest City endeavors to inform and educate the citizens of the right to freely choose where they want to live. And whereas, Midwest City is a city committed to equal opportunity and access to housing. Therefore, I, Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim the month of April 2017 as Fair Housing Month. And we'll give this to Terry Craft when she gets back to work. Thank you. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we'll move into the consent agenda of our agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda so that members of the city council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of all council members or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, that item will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to a pull items eight and 14 and approve the rest of the consent agenda.
I have a motion and I have a second. Or do I have a second?
Yeah.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions?
Item C8 is discussion consideration of authorizing and entering into a supplemental and modification agreement to the original engineering contract for Federal Aid Railroad Project Number RRCS-255N (410CS), State Job Number 32589, Pairing 23, with the Oklahoma Department of Transportation, and the total supplemental amount of $3,780.46 to reconstruct and signalize the railroad crossing located on Douglas Boulevard between Northeast 10th and 23rd Street. This modification is necessary to fix a clerical error that occurred at ODOT's Controller Office. The revised estimate for the total project is now $318,323.46, an increase of $3,780.46. We also have a companion item which you also removed from the consent agenda. I think the purpose of removing these was to address the fact that this project will provide for safety equipment at this location, and we have a number of other locations where we will install new safety equipment. However, the railroad has deferred as to the replacement or the repair of the driving surface. And we wanted to make that clear, that this project is going to get done, but it's not, but unfortunately, we will not be able to repair the driving surface. So if you have complaints about that, we would encourage you to contact ODOT.
And the reason it's not, correct me, city manager, is that we're not allowed to, correct?
That's correct. The railroad, the railroad itself is the responsibility of the railroad line, railroad company to repair, and so we're not, we are not allowed to make those physical repairs to the railroad, railroad line itself.
So, what it essentially means, anytime you go over railroad tracks on a road and they're really bumpy and you want to go, "I can't believe the city's not fixing it," we can't. It's the railroad's responsibility, and that's who's supposed to fix them. We by law can't even fix one. And as you know, there's a few around town that you think you're going to blow a tire out when you go over them.
So, actually, they would be, you refer your complaints to what?
DOT.
DOT.
To the rail division at Department of Transportation.
And also, this is one of these occasions where you can call your state representative and also your state senator and complain about these issues, because we're getting, the railroad has actually not even responded to our request to get these fixed. And I know there's several in town that are in bad need of repair, and it's not for the lack of trying on city staff or city council. I don't know why they're not doing what they're supposed to do by law, but they have deferred. So, the signal improvements are going to take place, but the driving service improvements will not. So, that's one of those great government things that we just can't figure out how to fix right now.
And I guess I would like to add that we've taken, there was some supplemental funding that came down from the federal government to address railroad crossings, correct, Patrick?
Yes, sir.
And so, we were on the early end of this and secured quite a bit of funding to replace the signal crossings. It's just that we can't get the railroad to go along and do what they need to do. But it's valuable by itself that we're getting the railroad, the safety equipment replaced at the railroad crossings.
Yes, that's accurate.
Is there any number that we can provide the public with to call and constantly send their complaints to that issue where that maybe at some point in time, soon, that they would take action on repairing that particular railroad track?
Yes, ma'am. If the citizens would like to speak to someone, the Department of Transportation website does have the direct phone number to the rail division. So, if anybody would like to speak to them about a particular crossing, there's a direct line on their website.
And is the Department of, DOT, Department of Transportation Railroad?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It's ODOT, but it is a Department of ODOT. So, the highway department, the state also oversees the rail corridors.
It's worth making note, though, that this, that we're talking about a private railroad company. We also have a rail line that bisects the city, starting at around Reno and going down to our Public Works Facility. And so, it bisects, hits Air Depot, hits Sooner Road, and also hits Midwest Boulevard. That rail line is actually a ODOT-owned rail line at this point. And so, though, none of those intersections are part of this project, it's just worth noting that it's not just a private railroad company, but there's an issue with ODOT and the maintenance of the rail crossings by ODOT as well, correct?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion on these two items?
Move to approve both of them.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Moving discussion items of the agenda?
First item is MP 12, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of Approval of the Uptown Addition Minor Plat Located in the Southeast Quarter of Section 3, Township 11 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. The owner is North Star Properties and Investments LLC, representative represented by Josh Atkinson. This is a minor plat in the Uptown Shopping Center to allow for the division of property. Mr. Atkinson, would you care to step up and give us your name and address?
Good evening. My name is Josh Atkinson, North Star Properties and Investments. Address is 7430 Southeast 15th Street.
Have you had a chance to read the staff report?
Yes.
Any questions, comments, concerns?
Mr. City Manager, there is one note on this item. There's some conflicting language that states both a five-foot and a 10-foot right-of-way dedication required with this application. To be clear, for the record, it's a five-foot dedication.
Okay. Thank you.
Any discussion on this item?
This is a public hearing.
This is a public hearing. Any response from the audience on this particular item? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Next item?
Next item is PC 1895, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of a Request to amend the existing SPUD simplified planning and development for the property described as a part of lots 1, 2, and 3 of Block 3, East Highland Acres, located at 601 South Air Depot Boulevard. The owner is Aldi Inc. The applicant is Brian Berger with Berger Engineering. The land use is an existing grocery store, and the reason for the amendment is to allow for an additional expansion of about 750,000 square, 750 square feet. Woo! Got real dense over there at the, at this location. Billy, anything you want to add here?
Nothing in particular, except that some of the fire comments were, there were a lot of questions about that at the planning commission, and then also upstairs at the staff briefing. And just to be clear, that's the Fire Department, Fire Marshal did recommend approval, and that it just wasn't an optimal situation by closing off the drive, but that it was still a workable situation for them. Yes, sir.
Is the applicant present? Do you have any additional comments or any questions of the council?
None.
This is a public hearing. Is there any questions or comments from the audience? Hearing none, the chair would entertain a motion.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Next item?
Next item is PC 1896, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of Approval of An Ordinance to Redistrict from R6 Single Family Detached Residential and A1 Agriculture to Plan Unit Development governed by the R6 Single Family District for the property described as attractive land lying in the east half of Section 8, Township 11 North, Range 1 West of the Indian Meridian, City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. The owners of the property are Ann Westmoreland, Carol Russell, and Ruth Fontes. The applicant is Gene Methman, engineer Brad Reed with Craft and Toll, propose uses for 205, 205 single-family residential lots. Mr. Harless, anything you want to add?
Nothing at this time. The applicant has requested that this be continued until the May 23rd meeting, I believe it is, the second meeting.
Is applicant present?
It's Brad Reed with Craft and Toll, 300 Point Parkway Boulevard, Yukon, Oklahoma.
Yes, sir. What's the reason for the continuance?
We are determining the direction we would like to go with this application. There's some things up in the air, and we just need some time to determine how we're going to proceed.
Okay, fair enough.
Could I ask, speaking of going a direction, have you ever thought about making like, maybe a little bit bigger houses and larger lots?
That's one option. That's what we're looking at.
A number of you are here on this particular item. Does anyone want to approach the council about this particular plat? Yes, sir. Could you state your name and address, please, for the record?
Yep, my name is Jim Wright, and I'm not the former Midwest City Councilman. I'm just a citizen of Midwest City, and I live at 12,000 JC Circle. I'm here this evening with my wife Bernadette. Bernadette and I have lived in Midwest City for the past 30 years, 28 years at 1213 Three Oaks Circle, and the last two years at 12,000 JC Circle. It is our current residence and the housing development proposed for construction across the street from us that brings us here this evening. We are opposed to the housing development being considered for the 50-acre section west of Anderson Road between Southeast 15th and Southeast 29th. This planned development is not consistent with Midwest City's own development planning documents, will cause traffic congestion on Anderson Road, will likely overcrowd area schools, and is redundant with housing developments already in the east Midwest City area. About two and a half years ago, we decided to build a new home and wanted to stay in Midwest City. We built on a one-acre lot in the JC Place Estates Addition. In deciding where to build, we reviewed Midwest City planning documents. Those documents, specifically Chapter 4 of Midwest City's Comprehensive Plan of 2008 titled Future Land Use Plan, led us to believe areas east of Post Road, quote, "should predominantly consist of larger lot residences," end quote. Since then, an apartment complex was built south of Southeast 15th between Westminster Road and Anderson Road. Now we get word from the city, a developer, Sedona Lakes LLC, wants to develop a 50-acre section called Anderson Crossing with 210, was the word I got, I know you mentioned 205, but 210 small lots to accommodate homes sized 1,200 square feet. For comparison, the minimum size home permitted in JC Place is 2,400 square feet. The development will be within 300 feet of our home, and actually, much closer, basically just across the street or across Anderson Road. Again, this is inconsistent with Midwest City's Future Land Use Plan. What follows are the considerations from the Future Land Use Plan the city is to use in land use development. This is from the section titled Development Proposals and the Future Land Use Plan. Quote, "At times, the city will likely encounter development proposals that do not directly reflect the purpose and intent of the land use pattern shown on the Future Land Use Plan, Plate 4-1. Review of such development proposals should include the following considerations. Will the proposed change enhance the site and the surrounding area? Is the proposed change a better land use than that recommended by the Future Land Use Plan? Will the proposed use impact adjacent residential areas in a negative manner? Or will the proposed use be compatible with and/or enhance adjacent residential areas? Are the uses adjacent to the proposed use similar in nature in terms of appearance, hours of operation, and other general aspects of compatibility? Does the proposed use present a significant benefit to the public health, safety, and welfare of the community? Would it contribute to the city's long-term economic well-being? Development proposals that are inconsistent with the Future Land Use Plan or that do not meet its general intent should be reviewed based upon the above questions and should be evaluated on their own merit. It should be incumbent upon the applicant to provide evidence that the proposal meets the aforementioned considerations and supports community goals and objectives set forth within this comprehensive plan," end quote. We do not believe Sedona Lakes LLC's proposed development, Anderson Crossing, meets any of these considerations. Furthermore, Item 5 of the Land Use Policies Section from the Future Land Use Plan states, quote, "Development should attempt to be compatible with surrounding developments by having similarly sized lots built next to existing lots," end quote. The small lots, 50 feet wide, in the proposed development are nowhere near the lot sizes of the JC Place or Tuscany Ridge additions that are just across the street or across Anderson Road. The development proposes 4.19 homes per acre, where Midwest City planning for single-family residential homes calls for 3.5 units per acre. Also, the proposed development does not address Item 7 of the Land Use Policies Section titled Preserving the Environment. It states, quote, "Tree preservation should be encouraged in new residential and non-residential developments," end quote. Leveling the trees for this 50-acre housing development would certainly not comply with this important consideration. The proposed development has two access streets, both intersecting Anderson Road. These are the only entry-exit points for the development. There are no through streets for the development or for any street off Anderson Road between Southeast 15th and Southeast 29th. Allowing 210 additional homes access to the two-lane Anderson Road would increase traffic congestion significantly. The development would nearly triple the number of homes that access Anderson Road between Southeast 15th and Southeast 29th. Currently, this represents approximately 75 homes. Figuring three cars per home, that is 225 vehicles accessing this section of Anderson Road today. Using the same three cars per home, the proposed development would add another 630 vehicles for which their only access to or from their homes is Anderson Road. Going from a total of 225 vehicles to 855 vehicles, needing access to Anderson Road represents a considerable increase in traffic for this two-lane road, and this does not consider other area traffic traveling this road daily. There are further considerations for this proposed development. It will likely add significantly to area school populations. We wonder if this is being considered for both the Middel and Choctaw School Districts, especially in light of the apartment complex previously mentioned and the continued growth of housing in the Sundance Addition between Anderson and Hiwasi Roads, south of Southeast 15th. Lastly, the density of the proposed development seems similar to the housing already provided in the Sundance Addition. Given the density of homes in Oakwood East, Sundance, and the apartment complex recently completed near Oakwood East, the proposed development would further increase the population density in this area of Midwest City to a level that is likely beyond what the city planning documents foresee. Again, we oppose the Sedona Lakes Anderson Crossing development plan because it is inconsistent with Midwest City's planning documents, will increase traffic congestion, may cause overcrowding of various schools, and is redundant to the type of housing that already exists in nearby developments, which could lead to a population density outside of city planning limits. For these reasons, we recommend your vote be against the proposed development. For these reasons, we recommend your vote be against the proposed development. Thank you.
Mr. Ray, thank you very much. Just, uh, just for the record, could I see a show of hands of the people that are here about this PUD? Um, you might want to take a look around. Uh, there's a lot of issues concerning this. Ladies and gentlemen, the applicant, uh, has requested a continuance for a later date. Being consistent with past practices of the city council, we're considering allowing that continuance to allow the applicant to come back with the suggested changes that have been made to him by the Planning Commission and also the staff. With that being said, the chair would entertain a motion.
One other thing I think he needs to take into consideration is what was just said to him in this cha, in this chamber, because there are some significant issues-
Absolutely.
-that are gonna have to be overcome to, uh, without, without it, without there being more issues for you. So I would suggest, if we're gonna grant this, that you make an effort to meet with these people between now and the twenty-third of May. Do I make a motion to, do we table it or continue it, or what?
Hold on, just, is there any further discussion from the public?
Yeah.
Please approach the podium and state your name and address, please.
Hello, I'm Sam Yerby, nineteen twenty-five Jerry Street. I live in Oakwood East. I am opposed to this. I am also, um, I was opposed whenever they built the apartments out there. We had, some of the issues were, um, our policeman actually told us that crime, the possibility of crime increasing, uh, is a very distinct possibility out there with that. In my opinion, uh, even though that was brought up, the city still agreed and let them build apartments there, which is the possibility of taking my value of my property down. Also, I, with the influx of people, um, with the, uh, economic situation that we're in, one of my other concerns is, are we gonna have enough police and firemen to, uh, take care of this area should, should something, should the need arise? Also, what about how is the, the sewers and the, uh, storm drains and the electric, uh, gonna be done? Is it gonna be passed off to me as a homeowner? And so, uh, I just want you to know that, um, I am opposed to this addition going up also. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Uh, maybe have Billy explain, sorry, Billy, but the apartments was a totally different deal, and there's a, it's a much different situation. It was, it was already zoned. There was nothing that the council could do. Can you mind going into that a little bit, Billy?
Yeah, the, uh, the apartment complex was a, uh, that whole area on that corner is zoned as a PUD, and it specifically, uh, had highlighted in it that the apartments could be built there and that they could be built out of those, the materials. There was a lot of concern about the materials, whether it met the ordinances for brick or wood or, or whatever, but that was specifically outlined in the PUD. So at that point, the city really didn't have any, uh, choice but to approve the, the permit.
And that, and that zoning occurred in nineteen eighty, between eighty-five and ninety, probably.
Eighty-two?
Eighty-two.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
Mike Dickey, one two zero four five Tuscany Ridge. Uh, I'm the Homeowners Association President for there. As our neighbor said, we're opposed to that as well. I, my question is, what's the due process of this if we do have a continuance? Does it go back through the Planning Commission at that point, where we have an option to come and, and hear what the revised plot is? Or will it be just, uh, will it just come back to this council at that, at that point? So what's the real difference between just voting it down and then resubmitting it versus a continuance at this point?
That's a very good question. Uh, if we allow the continuance, basically we, uh, allow it to be continued until next council meeting or until they resubmit, uh, the PUD. If the PUD resubmital is not consistent with the recommendations of staff, then we're gonna probably be dealing with the same thing that we're dealing with right now, and that is a denial by the Planning Commission and also by staff. And then it would be up to the city council to either accept that recommendation or go against that recommendation. I will tell you right now that we are wanting to be consistent with the Comprehensive Plan of the city of Midwest City, and also the current zoning. So with that being said, we will see what comes forward, uh, to the city council when they come back. We're hoping that, uh, they will take these recommendations to heart. And also, uh, just on a personal note, I want to thank each and every one of you for, number one, being involved. Number two, being cognizant of what's going on in your neighborhood, and more to follow. And, uh, and, uh, please do not hesitate to contact any of us sitting on this horseshoe concerning this issue, issue or any other issue. Are there any other further comments? Yes, sir?
Good evening. My name's Carl Schaefer. I live at one two zero five zero J.C. Circle, which is in J.C. Place Estates, like my neighbor Jim Ray here. Well, he's already provided you with a pretty comprehensive objection, so I think I'm gonna pare my comments down to one issue.
Yes, sir.
My wife and I moved out to this area because we were attracted to the green wooded, quiet semi-rural environment that still provided us. Matter of fact, Mr. Moore here is the principal developer of a very fine development. Anyway, still provided us with, uh, acc, access to city services and easy access to the city via automobile. I don't think anyone who moved out there, probably with the same motivation, was so naive as to believe that our situation would remain unchanged forever. I mean, development comes. What isn't inevitable is this kind of development. The city how, uh, Comprehensive Housing and Neighborhood Plan specifically calls out the unique character of eastern Oklahoma, uh, Midwest City, and, uh, and calls out as a value and a priority, the preservation of the rolling topography and what's left of the densely wooded, wooded areas. This is one of those densely wooded areas. My principal concern is I don't see any way that this community is going to be constructed without raising this forested area to do so. We're talking about putting houses on six thousand square foot lots, side by side, back to back, minimal space between them. I see it as virtually impossible to do that while allowing access of heavy equipment and delivery vehicles without cutting down the trees. And if that's what's to be done, then how about putting this community, if it's required, somewhere where that hasn't have to be done, where there are no trees to cut down, and save this particular plot for some developer who will present the council with a, a creative plan for integrated housing that integrates into and harmonizes with the natural area that, again, the city recognizes as a valued asset. And so we would definitely not like this development approved for this area.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yes, sir, back in the back.
My name is Roscal Hearn. I live at eleven six eleven Lorraine Avenue in Oakwood East. If you look at that map up there, just above the, uh, area of request brown rectangle there, I live on that street right above it, Lorraine Avenue. Uh, we've been there twenty-eight years, and as I understand it, this is requiring a zone change. Um, I don't support it at all. I think it's an inappropriate zone change for what's proposed. There are a lot of rumors circulating about what's gonna be done. I think most of the people that live in Oakwood East with us are concerned about the details, and we need to know where to go to find the details of the proposal. There are rumors that actually think we have a pond running up, uh, the middle between Oakwood East and Oakwood East Royale, and a nice park and, uh, playground activities and, and a running track and all that. We pay dues two hundred dollars a month. And, uh, rumors are, which I don't believe is happening, that they're gonna come in and fill the pond and build some homes in that area. But I've also heard that there will be no allowance for a fence to separate our properties, and it seems it would be reasonable, since we pay two hundred dollars a month for our park and, and area, that, that there be some form of separation, because it's just across the street on the house behind us. The other concern I have mainly is the lack of information. I think a lot of people in our community, Oakwood East, are concerned, but they don't know what they're going to, uh, protest against if they decide they're against it, and I think most are. The first gentleman, I agree with all of his concerns, and I agree with the concern of the second gentleman that we need more detailed information as to what we're going to be approving or not approving. The other big concern for most of the people I know is how it's gonna affect our property values, and I've done quite a bit of research on that. And, uh, even though most of what you read will say it doesn't affect property values, certainly the better quality, uh, subdivisions will affect your property value negatively less. But from the research I've done, property values within point one to point three miles of these developments will decline two and a half to three percent during the first year and continue up to ten years. And that generally, the recommendation of people who are looking for these kinds of communities are that the best place to put them is into other low income or near other low income communities, because that actually tends to raise the property values in those communities, and it also brings in higher income families to improve those communities that are already low income communities. But it does tend to affect the, uh, property values for sure, whether you may hear differently. So my biggest concern is, how can we get more complete information on what's being proposed so that we know how to make the right decision?
Well, number one, Russ, is, uh, well, first off, on the, on the ponds, I do not want Gracie Sullivan sitting on my chest beating me up.
Right.
I, I mean, I mean, Grace go back a long time, and I, all I do is say yes ma'am to her.
I understand.
So, um, with that being said, coming to these types of, uh, community events and being connected with your council is the number one way of getting good, solid, factual information. Number two, I'm gonna defer to, to Billy Harless, who's our, uh, director over that, over planning, and he's going to interject some stuff for you.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. Um, there's a couple of ways to get information. One is, um, our staff reports, the application, these maps, all of those things are online at the, at the, uh, city's website, um, under the agenda. Also, Kelly Gillis is our current, uh, planning manager. Um, her phone number's seven three nine one two two three. My phone number's seven three nine one two two eight. We're on the website. You can call and ask any questions about that. Um, I agree with, uh, a lot of the comments on the tree preservation, um, just to add a little bit more information. Our ordinances provide for, uh, an option. One of those is to put in roads and utilities everywhere that are required without touching trees and also the house. The other op, and that way you preserve some of the trees. But the other is a tree mitigation plan, and it provides for removing a bulk of the trees, if not all the trees. And then you're, um, they're required to come back in and, uh, plant, uh, replacement trees, and that's what they're pro, proposing to do on this. Um, there is a, a large park area that's also the detention facility. They're looking at doing something there, and there's also a area, see if I can find it real quick. Um, a small area through the middle, um, you see over on the, the, uh, which would be the east side or towards the entrances, uh, common, common area. Um, they're, they're proposing a few of these things. Trying to think what else was, another comment that was thrown out there. In Oklahoma, we don't really, the, the city does not plan, uh, for the school districts and the impacts that it has on school districts. We notify them, um, once a month or on a regular basis of, of the building permits and the applications that go through so that they can, they can plan for their own, uh, areas, so.
Okay. My other concern is the continuance, okay? We're coming up at the end of May when a lot of people go on vacation.
Yes, sir.
And, uh, if a strategy was to limit the number of people that might come in and complain about the proposal, a lot of people after the end of May would be on vacation and wouldn't be here to state their position.
Well, again, with the continuance, um, we have to be, uh, fair as a governing body to all concern. And in the past, in just recent past, within the last forty-five days, we granted a continuance for a SPUD, which is a special, uh, PUD. Uh, we granted him a continuance to come back, and it was, uh, eventually, uh, he came back and, and his plan was denied by council. So with that being said, uh, we have to be fair to all concerned, so we are gonna grant this continuance and allow him to come back with a, 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 a plan, and then we'll go from there.
I understand.
I don't think, uh, the mood of the council would, uh, grant any further.
I appreciate it.
One thing to remember, too, just so you're aware, and the gentleman that's here to represent this development, there's a reason people moved to Midwest City, and there's a reason people move on the east side of Midwest City. And those statements have been very well documented tonight, and I hope that you take that in consideration when you bring something back to us, because people live here for a reason, and they move out into the eastern part of Midwest City for a reason. And that's something that you need to be cognizant when you bring something back.
And I would like to see, uh, what the developer, uh, what, what he is trying to propose, uh, and work with, um, Billy, whilst with, uh, dev, uh, planning, because we have a military base here, and so we do, we would like to see nice homes built and, you know, compatible to the area. And, you know, we, I, I listen to your concerns, and I understand, you know, you're concerned about your community, and you should be. And, um, maybe the developer can come up with something, Billy, you, you know, we are gonna look at a continuous, uh, just however. We have to see what's, we have to give someone a chance.
Sure.
Because we, I, I don't know what other plan may be for that particular land, if it's just gonna lay dormant, you know, uh, you know, just a sightseeing or what, but you would want some purpose for the land to be used for at some point in time, or someone's gonna have to take care of it all the time, keeping it cut and maintained. But, uh, I do understand your concern, so.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, in the back.
And Mayor, while she's coming down, the message is very clear. The staff will get with the applicant and see if we can work something out to, to bring back to the council that, that meets more of the ordinances in Comprehensive Plan.
Thank you, Mr. Harless. I appreciate it. Yes, ma'am?
Good evening. My name is Colette Rolston. I live at one one six three six Lorraine Avenue. I agree with my neighbors, fellow Midwest Cityans. Uh, one thing that does concern me beside, in addition to all the other concerns, is the plans that I didn't hear about from the developer and the topography of the land. It is very similar to what it is on Lorraine Avenue in Oakwood East. And when those homes were built back in nineteen eighty-five, it's six, seven, whenever, um, they were not terraced properly. And I live about halfway up the street, and I've terraced my yard twice in the last twenty-five years to keep it from washing away. I did not hear of any concern or plan or anything regarding the new development and what they might do in that area, and I would request that be something that the developer really take into consideration, because it is going to wash down to their common area. It is gonna wash our land also once they have, you know, scraped the land bare or built homes if it is not terraced properly. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any further discussion? Yes, ma'am? Yes, sir.
How you doing? I'm Shane Willard, eleven zero three two Sheffield Street, and I've been sent here on behalf of the, uh... And I've been sent here on behalf of the board members of the Oakwood East Homeowners Association in opposition to this. But one thing I would like to point out to the developer is, right now, in our area, one-acre lots are getting anywhere from sixty to seventy thousand dollars an acre. Homes are appraising for around one-forty-five a square foot. Twelve-hundred-square-foot homes, you're not going to get what other people are getting. Just not going to happen. So that's where I'm at, as far as new developments coming in. Midwest City has a plan. The plan's going good. I say we stick with it. I don't know what was suggested to them before, but I think we all know what needs to happen in order to keep us on the path we're wanting to be on, and for all of our values in our east Midwest City area to continue to grow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Willard. Yes, ma'am?
I'm Linda Lynn at twenty-three-hundred South Anderson Road. I've lived there for forty years. We've seen a lot of changes and did expect some development in our area. It's been lovely being out in the country and looking across the road and seeing trees all the time and not houses. But I am concerned about the influx of children into the school district, which is already overcrowded. I'm concerned about the only two exits, and they're all on Anderson, for emergency, for emergency vehicles, picking up trash, evacuation if they had to leave. That's a lot of people to move onto exits and entrances, plus the extra traffic on Anderson, which we've had a lot with Fifteenth being out. So, also, I am concerned about the wildlife out there. There's a lot of wildlife, and you take the streams and stuff, and I don't know, is the one end of that park area in the floodplain, are they going to put a park in that area?
Yes.
They are? Okay. Because I was concerned, where are the kids going to go to have any place to play? There's a lot of kids. I mean, there's a possibility of a lot of kids. There, too. And fishing your pond, right? So, anyway, I am very concerned. That is a very dense area. And in about ten or fifteen years, there'll all be rental houses and a dump. That's my, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there any further discussion? Yes?
It's somewhat related to this, but not directly, but it will impact our homes in Oakwood East. I was wondering, I've heard they're building a crest across Fifteenth in the Choctaw Platte there. Is that true?
That's, there's nothing concrete going on with that right now, Russ.
Okay. It's just a proposal, maybe? Okay, thank you.
You bet. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to have to cut this discussion off. Again, as your mayor, and I'm sure I'm expressing the council's wishes as well, we want to thank you for being here. This actually makes our job a lot easier, when we have participation from our citizens in these types of matters. There will be more to follow on this. I ask that you go to our website or call me, and I'll keep you up to speed and as much as I possibly can, or any one of your council representatives. So with that being said, we do have a motion on the floor for a continuance.
Yep.
Do I have a second?
Yes, second.
I'm sorry?
They have, they have a first.
I, we did, I have a motion to continue to make the twenty-third.
I have a motion?
Is that the twenty-third? That's not City?
Yes, City. I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Sir, you have until May twenty-third. Thank you very much. And ladies and gentlemen, thanks again for being here. Move on to the next item?
Next item is PC eighteen ninety-seven, public hearing with discussion and consideration of approval of the preliminary plat of Anderson Crossing for the property described as attractive land lying in the east half of Section Eight Township eleven north, range one west of the Indian Meridian City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma.
Since the previous one was moved to the twenty-third, obviously, this one should be also moved, moved to move this one to the twenty-third.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Next item?
Next item is PC eighteen ninety-nine, public hearing with discussion and consideration of approval of an ordinance to amend the planned unit development governed by the C-Three Community Commercial District for the property described as a tract of land lying in the southwest quarter of Section Four Township eleven north, range two west of the Indian Meridian City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. The owner applicant is Bob Sterns with Sooner Rose LLC. Proposed use is commercial. Mr. Harless, you want to provide some additional information?
Yes, sir. As I juggle things here, as you stated, this is an amendment to the existing PUD, and I'd like to draw the council and audience to the figure up on the screen here. And the two areas that are hatched in this illustration are the areas that are going to be amended. The applicant would just simply like to swap those areas in layman's terms to be able to do the new PUD, which is the next item, where the proposed building is at, the dark shaded area. And it, when it's all said and done, there's basically a balance on the parking, because they have cross-access parking arrangements, and anyway, staff and planning commission recommend approval on this. I think overall, it'll make a better development.
This is a public hearing, Mayor.
Any discussion? Anybody in the audience wants to bring anything before council on this particular discussion item?
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. Next item?
PC one-nine-zero-zero, public hearing with discussion, consideration of approval of a resolution to amend a portion of the comprehensive plan from MDR Medium Density Residential to OR Office/Retail, and an ordinance to redistrict from R-six Single Family Detached Residential and C-three Community Commercial to planned unit development governed by the C-three Community Commercial District for the property described as attractive land lying in the southwest quarter of Section Four Township eleven north, range two west of the Indian Meridian City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma.
This is a public discussion. Mr. Maynard, you decided to speak on this particular item?
Just one real quick note. I passed out two documents right before the meeting, and those were handed to us to, actually, to Gillis right before the meeting. And they're, the red lines in them are the corrections to the PUD for this item, and then the following PUD. So there's just minor notes in that, and I wanted you all to have that before we dive too deep into this. They're pretty, they're pretty minor. There's some things about parking, and then, if you'll remember my comments in staff briefing about the signage only facing towards the south, so it would not glare back into the neighborhood, are two of the things that I know that are in there, and there may be a couple of others, but we'll have the applicant point those out as we go through. He has to.
Mr. Maynard?
Mr. Maynard to speak first, so.
You won't? Sir, go ahead and approach the podium. I'm sorry.
Mayor, Council, Chris Chalice with Sooner Investment, twenty-three oh-one West I-44 Service Road, Oklahoma City. Glad to be here tonight, and I'm here with, of course, Mr. Sterns, then Leland Clark, who you will hear from in a moment on the main presentation. But to address some of the technical things that Billy was just covering, at the very end of your staff report, which is very thorough and detailed, we did do a lot of work with staff going into the planning commission meeting, and had very good dialogue at the commission meeting. Following that, as noted in the last, next-to-last paragraph in the staff report, we had clarified three simple items in the PUD and resubmitted that were discussed here. Language about the tower sign only being on the south side. Clarification on Lot Two D, which is a small parcel out there at the out parcels. And then the other one was the architectural facade. And those sections, those changes are all noted elsewhere, and the PUD is acceptable, I think, to staff. And so, that, those were the three. Billy had the two of the three, that was the third. And I'm happy to answer any questions about that.
Any questions?
Okay.
Thank you very much, sir, for being here. Mr. Maynard? The floor is yours.
Jerry Maynard, fifty-nine-hundred Southeast Eleventh. You know, if we had to pick anything that we had to come back behind our house, this would probably be it. Beats having apartments and condominiums and other things. Plus, we knew it is probably going to be a community commercial endeavor. But most of my comments are really going to be, I'd rather do it one time, which is really going to encompass over to six, seven, eight, nine. So it's, rather than get up here and be redundant on the same issue.
Sure.
The, the city is putting in around fifteen million into this investment in this area. One of the things that I think that you shouldn't do is give, grant the variance on the half-street improvements, because that is going to become a collector's street. And it is also, when you look at it, even though it is a different name of the street, it is a contingent street all the way around. The only difference is east-west streets were numbered, and north-south streets are named. So Twelfth Street and really Buena Vista meld into one street. If you're going to have a premier development, as this is, then you should complete the street upgrades all the way through it. The other thing it will do is, down the road, when you do develop that section of Twelfth Street, where you are going to have those cuts into it, you're, the only thing you're going to do is disrupt a little bit of the traffic to make that cut in there to allow that entrance into the development. That way, you're not disrupting a lot of the traffic that's going to be coming through there to enter into the Warren Theater, because they're not going to want to come around Fifteenth Street, if they're headed north, and go through the stoplight at Sooner, then go through the stoplight that you're going to have at Center Drive and wait to turn left. So it makes more sense to improve that roadway all the way through, so that you don't have any future, I mean, in the future, you're not going to impact the people that are coming, because you're already going to have the businesses up and running. If you grant that waiver, you're going to have a substandard street that is already deteriorating. The subbase, for example, behind my house, is already beginning to erode, and it's dropped a good two to three inches, right there on the edge of the roadway. So this street is not designed to carry the additional traffic that...
And you're talking about Twelfth, correct?
Twelfth Street, correct. But if you're just improving Buena Vista, it's kind of like, you know, building a house and not putting a kitchen in it, because you don't have anybody living there. Let's wait until somebody buys it, and then we'll put the kitchen in. Doesn't make sense. You build it ready to go, and that's what I think you need to do, because Twelfth Street and Buena Vista is one integral street. The, other thing, too, that I noticed was, when you have that berm that they're proposing, as you're currently heading south on Buena Vista and you intersect into Twelfth Street, you're not going to be able to see the traffic until you pull almost out there. So there will definitely have to be signage put there to ensure that traffic stopped at least two directions, which would be that, from Buena Vista heading on to Twelfth Street, and Buena Vista heading on, heading south.
Excuse me just a minute, Mr. Maynard. Patrick, would we make sure that the site triangle in that particular intersection is taken care of? He does make a valid point on that.
Yes, sir. That is a concern for engineering as well. We'll try to make sure all the line of sight is at the intersections, at the T-intersections, and at the curve. There's visibility for the traffic, so there's, there are safety concerns that we will address.
Okay. Because that berm extends all the way across the backside of the property, correct?
To a point, yes, sir. But there will be site triangles, there will be setbacks concerning the berm. It won't go up to the road's edge by no means.
Okay.
Because there's been numerous near collisions.
Yes, sir. I agree with you.
There. And you've got a stockade fence that's right there that blocks it, and so it makes it really difficult when you're there. The other thing that I mentioned at the planning commission was, during inclement weather, where you've got the ice and stuff, those folks coming from the, headed south down Buena Vista, end up deep into the field. And if this berm is similar to the one that they've got in Moore, there's a possibility that you're going to have some damage, not only to the berm, but, you know, so is there going to be, are you going to require some type of a barrier device to ensure that cars don't take and, you know, do additional damage that's in that direction?
I don't think that's been considered, Mr. Maynard, but we'll certainly take that into consideration. Actually, we never even thought about it, to be quite honest with you, but you're, again, you make a very valid point.
Because currently, there are signs that, on the curve of Buena Vista and Twelfth Street, that I know have been replaced four times. And if you can see the, those, and they've been taken out, you can pretty much guarantee that something's going to happen with this berm.
Yes, sir.
But that is, I think, our main concern is that roadway and the increased traffic, and it's not adequate right now that, to do that. And I'm thinking, too, now would be the time to upgrade that, especially with all the money that the city's invested in that, and make it a complete project and not halfway it.
Yes, sir.
And your cost today is going to be a lot less than it will be down the road.
Yes, sir.
And the signal lights, when you put those in at Center Drive, are you going to put in those flashing yellow lights that'll give them that left turn?
I'd have to defer to Mr. Menifee on that one.
Because currently, those flashing lights that are on Sooner, there has been numerous accidents that have happened there, and there's been a ton of near accidents.
Are you talking about the flashing yield, or yellow yield, dawncoming traffic while they're flashing?
Yeah. And every, every morning, going to work on Twenty-Ninth and Air Depot, I see, I don't know how many cars that have almost been plowed into. And when you've got that, two lights, that close together, you're looking for problems, because you're going to want, that guy's going to want to get in there so he can go see that movie, and by golly, he's not going to wait. And you're going to have an issue.
Yes, sir.
Because you're looking at what, less than a tenth of a mile.
Like I said, I'd have to defer to Mr. Menifee on that and the traffic lights and the design, because that's, that's all regulated by ODOT, I assume, and the Feds.
Yes, yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. I just, to let Mr. Maynard know that.
We may not have to have a choice on that.
Yeah, that, right now, that is the new standard.
Well, we did have on Sooner and Fifteenth, because the way those are lined up, it was very confusing, so they took that out. Now, the ones going in north and south, those are there, and those are the ones to where I saw, almost saw Volkswagen get taken out by an eighteen-wheeler. And that would have been deadly. But, so that was the other concern I had, is what type of stoplights that would be put in there at center, because you're, there's only a tenth of a mile difference between that and the light at Sooner.
Yes, sir.
But I think that's all I've got at this point.
And to note, Mr. Mayor, the new standard is the yield, yellow arrows for left turns. That... That would be the default to start with an intersection that we signalize. We would have to go by the safety record of an intersection to restrict that. So if it does become a traffic hazard, then we would go to a protected left arrow. But I believe it would start as a yield arrow.
Thank you much, very much, Mr. Maynard, for taking time out to be here. Is there any further discussion on these, on this particular item from the audience?
I know we haven't planned on developing or working on that street, but he made some very, really valid points.
He does.
And we're talking about quality of life. We're, we're concerned about the neighbors north of there. I know it's not right now in the project, but I think that's, if we've got a list, I think that street goes to the top of it.
Point taken. Move to approve. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
If, if I can, can we clarify on the height of the monument sign out front to make sure that we include that, whether it's 38 feet or whether it's lower than that, so that we know how to...
As they requested.
As they requested, it's at, they've requested it at 38 feet.
Yes.
Yes.
That, that's added to it.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Next item.
This is PC 1901, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of Approval of the Sooner Rose Addition Phase Two Preliminary Plat for the property described as a tract of landline in the southwest quarter of Section 4 Township 11 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. This is a item that goes in as companion item with the Sooner Rose Phase Two Development. This is the preliminary plat for the, for the development, which will be followed, if approved, by a final plat at a subsequent meeting.
Does applicant have any further, for the, for the council? Is there any discussion on this particular item?
Billy, is this the one, where do we deal with the sign on the bill?
Uh, that'll be the next item, sir.
Is there any further discussion from anybody in the audience?
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Next item.
Public hearing with discussion and consideration of approval of a resolution to amend a portion of the comprehensive plan from MDR Medium Density Residential to OR Office Retail and an ordinance to restrict, redistrict from R6 Single Family Detached Residential and C3 Community Commercial to Plan Unit Development governed by the C3 Community Commercial District for the property described as a tract of landline in the southwest quarter of Section 4 Township 11 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. The applicant in this case is Ray Trails with Warren Theaters LLC. Uh, we have a representative in the audience. You want to come on down and give us your, I'm horrible with names, so I'm sorry, you're going to have to give it to us again.
Good evening. Brad Teeter with Spengenberg Phillips Tice Architecture, 121 North Mead, Wichita, Kansas. If you'd like, I could give just like a four or five-minute presentation of the project or answer any questions if you have.
Does anybody have any questions? We've, we've pretty much gone through the, the project design and everything, and thank you for being here, number one. Does anybody have any questions on the worship? Is there any questions from anyone in the public? This is a public discussion. Hearing none, the chairman entertaining a motion?
Yeah, and on this, I believe we had talked about the sign's going to face south or, or to the southeast or southwest, so it's not going to be facing north, I think. Move to approve.
I have a motion.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you for being here, sir. We appreciate it. Next item.
This is PC 1903, Public Hearing with Discussion and Consideration of Approval of the Sooner Rose Warren Addition Preliminary Plat for the property described as a tract of landline in the southwest quarter of Section 4 Township 11 North, Range 2 West of the Indian Meridian City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma.
Again, the applicant is in the audience. Is there any further from the applicant on this particular item? This is a public discussion. Anyone wish to discuss this item with the council?
Move to approve.
Hearing none. I've got a motion.
And a second.
I have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries. We move into the new business public discussion of our agenda. Anyone have anybody or anything that they wish to bring before the council at this time? Keeping in mind, if it's not an agenda item, it cannot be actively discussed by council. There are some further information items on the agenda. Last that you take a look at them. If there's no further discussion, we are hereby adjourned. Called to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority Agenda. We do have a consent agenda. These items are placed on the consent agenda, so the trustees of the Midwest City Municipal Authority by unanimous consent can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any one item proposed does not meet the approval of all the trustees or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda.
We would request that item five be removed from the consent.
Move to pull item number five and approve everything else.
I have a motion. I have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The motion carries.
B5 is Discussion and Consideration of Approving the Termination of the Sewer and Water Agreement with the Yes Company's EXP LLC for the water and sewer service provided to the Timberland Mobile Home Park property east of the corporate limits of the city of Midwest City. We would request this item be continued to the next meeting.
Move to continue this item till the next meeting.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstention? Motion carries. We knew, we now move into the new discussion, new business portion of the agenda. Anyone having anything to bring before the municipal authority of the city of Midwest City? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. We now call to order the Midwest City Municipal, or Hospital Authority. We do have two discussion items on the agenda.
First item is discussion and consideration, I'm sorry, discussion and consideration of the minutes from the regular meeting of April 11th, 2017.
Move to approve.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries.
Next item. Next item is Discussion and Consideration of Action to Reallocate Assets, Change Fund Managers, or Make Changes in the Statement of Investment Policy Guidelines and Objectives. No action is necessary on this item.
Ladies and gentlemen, we move into the new business public discussion of our agenda with the hospital authority. Anyone having any business with the hospital authority, please come forward. Hearing none, we do have an executive session.
That is Discussion and Consideration of One Entering Into Executive Session as Allowed Under 25OS Section 307(c)(10) to Confer on Matters Pertaining to Economic Development, Including the Transfer of Property, Financing or Creation of a Proposal to Entice a Business to Remain or Locate Within the City, and To an Open Session Authorizing Action as Appropriate Based on the Discussion and Executive Session.
Move to go to executive session.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, we'll be moving into the executive session. We'll be back. We may not come back.
I notice you're a trip hammer on motion to approve too. On my meetings, I'm a trip hammer motion, motion to approve. I want you to know that those improvements that you guys made are like... Yeah. Just want to tell you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
You bet.